Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Dean Logan. I'm the Record Star Recorder County Clerk for Los Angeles County. And we're pleased to have you here this evening. This is the fourth, it's the fourth public hearing of our election administration plan for Los Angeles County. And the election administration plan is our summary document that talks about how we're going to conduct outreach and education for the new voting model for Los Angeles County that we're rolling out in 2020. First, I'd like to thank the Office of Supervisor Margaret Lee Thomas for assisting our team with coordination of this facility for our hearing. The draft election administration plan that I just mentioned was posted on October 9th for public review on our website at LAvote.net. And it's been developed, again, to describe the county's strategy for administering elections under the California Voters' Choice Act, which is the legislation that gives counties in California the option of moving away from the single-day, single-location polling-location model of voting that we've been accustomed to traditionally to a vote center model that operates over an 11-day voting period where voters are allowed to vote at any voting location throughout LA County. It also includes a considerable amount of implementation of the County's Voting Solutions for All People program, which is the components that will be used at the vote centers in 2020, including the ballot marking device that we have here tonight. I hope you've had a chance to look at that and to try it out. If you haven't, please feel free to do so after the hearing is over tonight. That's what it's here for, is for demonstration. And you'll hear more about that during the presentations that are coming up. So at a very high level, the plan communicates our voter education outreach plan and our process for identifying and operating the vote centers and the vote-by-mail drop-off locations that will be located throughout the county, beginning with the March 2020 presidential primary election. The plan is available in an accessible format on our website. It's also available in 13 languages to comply with our Voting Rights Act, compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act and State Voting Rights Act. And it is open for public comment through November 19th. We are taking public comments in a number of ways. We can take those by phone, or we have staff who will take down information. That's available at (562) 229-6361. We also have an email address that we'll post at the end of the presentation where people can submit public comment. And there's also an online portal where you can download the report and actually submit comments directly from there as well. And we will be taking public testimony at this conclusion of the hearing this evening. The presentations you're going to hear tonight focus on the key points of the election administration plan, and details on the various topics can be found in the actual document. The meeting tonight is going to be conducted as a true public hearing format, so we will go through a series of presentations. We will ask that you hold your questions until the public comment portion of the meeting at the conclusion of those presentations. And if you haven't done so already, if you do wish to submit testimony tonight, we ask that you fill out a comment card and a sign-in table, or we can bring those in and distribute them, just so we can keep an accurate record of who is here tonight and who is presenting the comments. The hearing is being recorded, so that's just our ability to document that we had the hearing, and we will be posting that on the public website as well. We may not answer all questions, but staff is available to assist you tonight. Given the number of people here tonight, though, we should be able to accommodate questions and answers as needed. So I also want to, I already noted, that we have the ballot marking devices available for your use and demonstration after the hearing. We have a number of people from our staff that are here to assist you as well. So to kick things off, before we get into the formal presentations, I did want to share with you the agenda for this evening. These are the presentations you're going to hear about, an overview of the Voters' Choice Act and the Voting Solutions for All People initiative. We'll have a presentation on our media and outreach program for the election cycle, a presentation on the Vote Center Placement Project, which was the process that we went through, a series of public engagement activities to get input on where to cite the locations that we'll be using for vote centers. And then we'll talk specifically about the proposed vote centers and vote-by-mail drop-off locations, and then we'll end with some comments on security and contingency plans as we head into the election cycle. Late in September, we held a mock election in the county. We opened about 50, or exactly 50, vote center locations throughout the county, 10 in each of our five suburban residential districts, and we invited the public to come in, very much like you're able to tonight, to use a demonstration unit and to learn about the new model. That was the kickoff for our public education and outreach campaign. So I wanted to start tonight before the formal presentations, which is sharing a very brief video that summarizes the mock election and some of the feedback that we heard from voters in that process.
The machine was pretty good, man. I liked it. I think it's so much faster and easier to just press and click the screen rather than like punching something.
It's literally a touchscreen with instructions that are easily understandable.
This is as simple as like ordering food at any restaurant, unlike one of those terminals that they have.
Now it's all incorporated in the one machine, where if you don't want to just do the screen, you have issues hearing, we have audio. If you're blind, we have a touchpad that will help you through the process. So all those things, so we're covering all the bases of people with all kinds of disabilities.
It wasn't as intimidating to use as, you know, the piece of paper with everything on it and worrying about, am I missing something?
I thought that the process was very easy, very streamlined, and I think our younger generation will be excited about it, too.
I think they're going to like it more. It's going to change completely. It's like a different ballgame. The voters in LA County should be very excited about the new changes.
So we were obviously very pleased with the feedback that we received from voters and the number of people who turned out during the mock election. But we also recognize that this is a very large and diverse county. We have over 5.4 million registered voters. So our ability to get out into the community and demonstrate this equipment, educate people on what to expect come the new year in preparation for the presidential primary election cycle is very important, and that's what the election administration plan is all about. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Monica Flores, who is our Administrative Project Manager for the Voting Solutions for All People initiative in the department, and she's going to kick off the presentations this evening. Thanks again for being here.
Good evening, and thank you for being with us today. So I am going to tell you a little bit more about the Voters' Choice Act and the Voting Solutions for All People. In 2016, Governor Brown signed the Voters' Choice Act. It is an act that completely transforms the way that the voters engage in the electoral process. Currently, voters must go to their assigned polling place to vote on one designated day, or they can vote by mail. In the new model, voters can still vote by mail, but they will now also be allowed to vote at any of the locations throughout the county over a period of 11 days. So this eliminates the restriction of them to voting on one day at one location. Furthermore, voters now have the opportunity to register to vote at any of these locations, means if they miss the deadline to register to vote, or that deadline is really non-existent now because they can come into a location, register to vote, and vote on that same day. Prior to transitioning to this new model, any county must submit an election administration plan, which is what we're presenting to you today. And we're inviting you to provide feedback on, as Dean mentioned, you can provide feedback here today. You can also submit feedback online and over the phone. The plan covers topics such as an outreach plan, vote center placement, and election security. We published this draft plan on October 9th, and the public period and comment period ends on November 19th. Again, you can comment online, over the phone, or at this meeting. We intend to submit a final plan to our Secretary of State the end of this year. Now, the Voters' Choice Act expands the options for voters to vote, but it's part, for us, it's part of a larger implementation. We're implementing a whole new voting solution. We call it the Voting Solutions for All People. This initiative introduces new technology, new tools that our voters can use to cast a ballot. Some of these tools are, you see here, one of them is our ballot marking device. The ballot marking device is the tool that the voters will use to mark and cast a ballot. They can also utilize an interactive sample ballot. Let me get that door open. The voters can also utilize an interactive sample ballot that will allow them to pre-mark their selections, and I'll go into a little more detail, but to pre-mark their selections and then transfer them onto the ballot marking device when they come into a location. Furthermore, we'll also be utilizing a new electronic poll book to check in voters and a new tally system to count all of the ballots that come from these ballot marking devices as well as that come by mail. The vote-by-mail experience itself has been redesigned, and this was introduced in November of 2018. This new ballot was really designed for the voter experience. We brought voters in to help us design it, to make sure that's easy to use, that it's accessible. Additionally, we'll be implementing a remote accessible vote-by-mail solution. What this is, is it's a tool that voters can use to mark their ballot at home using their own technology, such as screen readers, sip-and-puff devices, and any other tools that they may be comfortable with utilizing to mark their ballot. So as mentioned, in the future, we will have the ability to vote at any vote center in the county over a period of 11 days, providing much more flexibility and convenience. We seek to place these vote centers at locations that are easy to identify for voters, easy to access. We conducted a lot of research to identify where these locations should be placed, and this is part of our Vote Center, Vote Center Placement Project, which you'll hear a little bit more about today. To gather potential vote center locations, we looked at our current inventory of polling places, we held community meetings, and we conducted public surveys, and established an online suggestion portal. Once voters are at a vote center, they will be checked in using an electronic poll book. The electronic poll books replace those large rosters that you currently sign when you check in at a polling place. They allow us to verify that a voter's eligibility to vote in an election. They also allow us to verify that a voter hasn't voted at another location or by mail. Electronic poll books also allow us to spoil a vote-by-mail ballot. If, say, you were issued a vote-by-mail ballot, wish not to vote it, but prefer to vote in person, we can spoil that ballot and issue you a ballot to vote in person. And finally, the e-poll books allow us to register our voters, or voter, and allow them to cast a ballot on that same day. We believe that e-poll books will greatly reduce the number of provisional ballots that are cast. Currently, the largest reasons that we cast provisional ballots are because voters are at an incorrect location, so at the wrong polling place, or they were issued a vote-by-mail ballot that they do not have to surrender. So as I mentioned, both of those scenarios would go away with the new electronic poll book. Also in this new experience is the interactive sample ballot. The interactive sample ballot allows voters to view and mark their sample ballot on a computer or a mobile device. It produces a poll pass once they mark their selections, which can be easily scanned and transferred at one of the ballot marking devices like the one you see here at a vote center. So essentially, instead of having to manually transfer your selections, say if you mark them on your paper sample ballot, the device itself will scan it and populate them on the BMD, where you can verify your selections in a print and official ballot. You can make any changes along the way. Your selections are not official until they're on that ballot marking device. It's important to note that this is an optional tool for voters. It does not replace the need for voters to visit a vote center and mark an actual ballot or to mail a vote-by-mail ballot if they prefer to do so. Now, we've talked quite a bit about the ballot marking device. It is a tool that allows the voter to mark and cast their official ballot at a vote center. It is designed to be easy to use, accessible, and secure, allows voters to make their selections either using the touchscreen interface that you see or the tactile keypad. Voters can also listen to their ballot through the audio feature, and once the voter marks their selections, then they will all print a paper ballot, which the voter can verify before casting. It's important to note that no selections are stored or captured on that ballot marking device. It is not connected to a network or the internet while it is at the vote center. It is simply plugged in for power. Oh, and I missed the tally system there. So the tally system is the new system that we have to cast all of the paper ballots that either come by mail or are printed using the ballot marking device. This new technology will be, is already in place and is going through some modifications to accept the ballot marking device ballots, but we've already tested our first version of it. So those are the various components. I'm going to show you a video now that ties it all together and gives you a quick picture of how this will work for voters.
The election is just around the corner, and Los Angeles County has a new way for voters to make their voices heard. New Los Angeles County vote centers are located throughout the county. Cast your ballot near your home, work, or favorite park. Voters can go anywhere. To find a vote center that's convenient, visit LAvote.net and find one that works best for you. Instead of waiting for one day to vote, you are now able to vote across 11 days. Once you've arrived, a vote center assistant will greet you and check you in before taking you to the ballot marking device. Did you know that there is a new interactive sample ballot that lets you pre-mark your selections online and generate a poll pass? A unique QR code that will let you quickly transfer, review, and cast your selections on a paper ballot at the county vote center. The new ballot marking device includes an audio ballot, a touchscreen, and a tactile keypad to make voting faster and more accessible. You can also select your language, change the font size, and adjust the contrast for easy viewing. Then, after you make your selections or scan your poll pass, you can review your ballot to verify your choices and cast your ballot by feeding the paper ballot back into the ballot marking device. There's no need to give your ballot to a vote center assistant. You cast it on the same device. Welcome to the future of voting in Los Angeles County. Fast, convenient, and easy. Go to vsap.lavote.net to exercise your right to vote and let your voice be heard.
As you can see, there's a lot of changes coming for our voters, and it's super important that we communicate these changes to them. So one of the ways that we're doing that is through the use of media. And today, my colleague Mike Sanchez is going to tell you how we're working with the media to share these changes with our voters.
All right. Thank you, Monica. So as it was mentioned earlier, currently, we have 5.4 million registered voters within the county of Los Angeles. But we also have an additional, approximately 1 million eligible but not yet registered voters who we obviously want to message to you and let them know that there's going to be a lot of changes that are going to be coming up, and also encouraging them to register to vote and providing them election information as well. So the election administration plan provides greater detail of exactly the types of communication vehicles that we will be utilizing, and timelines and mailings that will be sent out. And what I'll go over right now is more of a high-level objective of what we will be, what you could read about inside of the EAP. So we are going to be saturating the Los Angeles County market. We're going to be on radio, television, we're going to be on digital streaming applications. In years past, in previous election cycles, we have had and have conducted several election awareness campaigns, and we're very confident in the partnerships that we have created and have established. And within the last two presidential primary elections, we've actually seen an increase in registration and also in voter, I'm sorry, in vote-by-mail, permanent vote-by-mail applications. So we feel very confident not only in the partnerships that we have, but also the messaging. And with that, we will also be having outdoor media, so the media that you'll be seeing outside of your home, such as billboards, or buses, or bus shelters. What you don't see on here, or what could be also alluded to as print media, is direct mailings. We will be sending every registered voter a direct mailing to their home, letting them know of the changes that will be coming in the next March presidential primary election, give them the options. We'll provide them resources of where they can learn more and see more and get more information on that. And lastly, but certainly, well, I mentioned it right there, direct mailings. So what I wanted to showcase to you tonight was actually a video production that one of our talent, Ryan Mano, provided for us when we conducted the mock election, which was later, earlier in the year in September. And this is just an example of what could be shown on social media platforms, on broadcast or cable television, YouTube, et cetera. So I'm going to go ahead and play that now.
Hey, it's Ryan Mano from the LNK Morning Show. I'm Coast 103.5. And you know, LA County has revolutionized the way you vote for the 2020 elections, making it easier and more convenient for everyone to vote. So the new ballot marking devices all have new adjustable touchscreens to make reading, marking your ballot, and casting your vote completely hassle-free. Adjustable font size, your choice of 13 different languages, an audio headset, and a control pad, which gives you all the tools of simplifying the voting process, which saves you time. All you have to do is show up, make your selections, print, and cast your vote. Boom, done. Plus, over 1,000 voting centers will be available in 2020, and you'll have 11 days to vote at any vote center near you, whether it's near your job school, shopping mall, maybe a grocery store. You can kiss those days of long lines and confusion at your voting center goodbye. To learn more about the new and improved voting experience, go to coast1035.com/LAVote.
This was in partnership from a campaign that we conducted earlier this year, but what we've realized in history and in previous campaigns and experiences is that the message is important, but who is saying that message is equally important, and that's one of the big reasons why we have established key partnerships in a variety of different multi-ethnic, multilingual media networks, so we can rely on their celebrity endorsement to provide our message. And we found that to be key in really providing awareness and education in our campaigns from years past. So Ryan Mano was at one of our vote centers, mock vote centers in our last campaign, and he did great. And he, alongside with other big celebrities such as Ryan Seacrest, Mario Lopez, Piolín, Don Cetto, these are just a few of the big names who are within our market, who will be, we will utilize for our future campaign to endorse our message and raise awareness to the community. So that focuses primarily on the paid element. There's another element that we also utilize, which is an earned element. And what we have done over the past decade, or even longer than that, is establish relationships with our local and regional media outlets that includes print, digital, TV. We've had, earlier this year, we had a media roundtable in which we invited everyone that is on our distribution list to our office to really raise awareness and get educated on what they can expect and what the voters can expect moving into the year of 2020. And from that media roundtable, we were able to establish some featured stories. So we had several really good, really educational interviews that were conducted. It also provided them the opportunity to utilize the ballot marking device and to ask questions that their readership would likely ask, and really confirm things or confirm what is true and what is not true, what is factual and what is not. And what we've also were able to leverage is events. So we actually go to several events on a daily and weekly basis where we're able to partner with these outlets and be alongside them, so that when we do go to like for a community event, for example, you'll have a Univision tent, and right next to them would be our table with our ballot marking device you have here. And it really is a collaborative approach where they're bringing in individuals because they are a very recognized, well-known name and entity. So when they get brought in, our outreach staff will then step in and raise awareness and educate, and actually allow those attendees to come and utilize the new ballot marking device, and also take home materials that they could, you know, share with their community or read upon later that evening. The earned media element of this is going to be very critical, and it's also a cost-effective way for us to really expand and amplify our message. So we will be utilizing earned media as well in the future. And some of the outreach events that we have been doing on top of this, obviously, this public hearing today, is demonstration centers. And we will be hosting 10 locations throughout January of 2020, and they will be spread throughout the entire county of Los Angeles. And what attendees will be invited and allowed to see is the ballot marking device and also the electronic poll book, which, as we referred to earlier, was, is going to be the way in which a voter comes and checks in, and it really allows for those capabilities for an individual to go to any location, to make any edits or changes to their registration information. And they won't be able to actually activate it, but the attendees will be able to utilize it, see it, ask questions, and become more familiar with that device. And we're going to be changing locations, so we're not going to be just at the same 10 locations from now to January next month, and the month of December, we're going to have 10 new locations that are going to be available, and we've been promoting that on our, to our community-based organizations, to our social media platforms, our county departments, and we're making that known, and we're raising that to the attention of the public. So if you or any of your family members would like to actually experience this, we would highly encourage you to locate our demonstration centers, which can be found on LAvote.net, and you'll be able to experience and actually do a vote on a demonstration ballot and really get a chance to interact with the new device. So we will, we will, this is one of the vehicles and one of the ways that we will continue the outreach and having, raising awareness. And to just, to just jump a little bit more on the outreach elements of it, to date, we've done over 300 presentations. That includes community outreach events, and also presentations very similar to this, where we're bringing materials, we're bringing the device, and we are able to actually educate people who are in attendance on the changes that are going to be coming up in the future. And we will continue to do this throughout the remainder of the year and throughout, literally, all of 2020. This is something that we will only continue and even amplify even more as we get closer to the election. And last but not least, what you can find, and what we found is very important, is creating materials in which can be shared amongst the communities, especially within the languages that those communities, you know, read and write. And we, on our website, on LAvote.net, you will be able to find posters, postcards, social media images. That also includes videos that, like you saw today, kind of gives an overview of what to expect in the year of 2020. And the important thing to note is that they will be, and they are available in all 13 languages. And one of the big takeaways that I would like to leave the group with is everything that we create internally as a department and we provide on our website and on public social domains, we absolutely encourage you to take that, to utilize it, to share it within your communities, and really help us amplify, again, raising awareness of not only the new device, but the new time duration of the increased days of voting, and just the general knowledge of what will be coming in 2020. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over now to Jeff Klein, who will talk a little bit more about community outreach.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so I'm going to talk more, as Mike said, about our community outreach. So you can think of it more along the lines of peer-to-peer outreach. Mike talked a lot about our media and outreach on a wide scale throughout the county. Our peer-to-peer outreach really does a lot more micro-targeting and reaches out to specific communities, really enhances the outreach by getting folks within the community to partner with us and carry our message throughout LA County. Being such a large county is really vital. We use what's called a partnership model to make sure that we are effective in getting the word out and really bringing folks on board to take that message and convey it for us. So what does that entail? So with community engagement, as Mike said, we've done over 300 presentations. We're actually getting close to 350 presentations over the last year and a half, and these are really presentations specifically geared to what you're hearing about tonight, VSAP, but more in the terms of what voters need to know about the changes that are going on in 2020. We've done over 500 community events, so we, not only do we offer voter registration and a lot of election resource materials, but a lot of what you saw when you came in today, all those materials are available at all of the outreach events that we go to. In addition, at some events, we do bring the ballot marking device out, depending on upon the event, but we make it available whenever possible. One thing we do a lot of is collaboration. And we collaborate with our 88 cities throughout the county. We work with the city clerks. Cities play a really crucial and vital role in each community. They're the first point of contact for many residents within those communities. So we want to make sure we work closely with the cities to help us get the word out. Also, we have about 200 pretty solid community-based organizations that we work closely with to make sure we are not only getting our message out there, but they also provide subject matter expertise. They're very active in various specific communities, whether it's a demographic community or a regional community, and we really depend on these organizations to help us craft our message and inform us what is the best way to get our message out to these respective communities. We do what's called collaborative outreach, which I touched on a little bit towards the end of the last slide, but a little more on collaborative outreach. What we do is we target specific audiences. We know, you know, resources are finite, so we're trying to look at where our resources can be most effective. So we might look for specific audiences if we have a demographic we want to reach out to. We share our best practices. We've been doing outreach, high-level outreach for a number of years. And we're always learning. There's always new information we're getting, either working through an organization and learning how they might message, or they might work with the community, or just things we learn through trial and error. We like to share those practices so other organizations and communities can benefit from what we do. We have something called a VSAP Ambassador Program. We created this program to allow organizations to be empowered in order to take VSAP and take that message out into the community. So we've had organizations come in, Legal Women Voters, a number of other organizations, Chirla, other organizations have come in. We've trained them. We've walked them through the ballot marking device, and now they're able to go out and offer presentations on our behalf. And then the hands-on experience is really a vital role in the outreach that we do, which is why we have ballot marking device here tonight. But at town halls, big community events, one example you might have seen at Taste of Soul, we had some of the ballot marking devices out in the community, and it's a great opportunity for folks who are a little nervous about technology or also curious about the changes. We look for greater opportunities of engagement. So what does that mean? We mobilize community organizations. A lot of it is a little bit of what I described, empowering community groups to really go out into the community. In terms of the mock election, we really accelerated this type of engagement. We looked for organizations that were active in various communities. We found the mock election sites. As Mike mentioned, there were 50 mock election sites around LA County. So we matched up mock election sites to organizations to help them drive people out to those various mock election sites. As mentioned a couple times, the demo centers, we have 10 around LA County. And those are playing a great role for people who want to just walk in and learn about the ballot marking device. But also, they're offering opportunities for organizations to maybe have a meeting nearby and then take their members down to one of the demo sites and get that hands-on experience. So it's really empowering communities to really band together and inform each other about the changes that are going on within their community. Also, we are constantly working with representatives and cities and other large organizations to set up town halls. And these town halls, you could think of them as an outreach event plus a ballot marking device demonstration. When you combine that together, maybe similar to what you're seeing tonight, but more for just getting the word out about the changes, not necessarily the overall administration plan. One thing that we do is we have support, a number of non-English languages. We have 12 that we provide assistance for, and I have them listed up here: Armenian, Chinese, Cambodian, or Kamai, Farsi, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Spanish, Tagalog, or sometimes called Filipino, Thai, and Vietnamese. Additionally, so that's what we translate election materials into. We also provide some limited assistance in Bengali, Gujarati, and Urdu. So we have a lot of assistance, and we really use this as a focus in order to provide assistance to voters who are maybe limited in English proficiency. It's an inclusive approach where we want to really welcome all communities. It's a very diverse county. We really want to reach out and provide support in as many languages as we possibly can. In addition to developing the materials, sort of the back, the behind-the-scenes work, I guess we can call it, that goes into putting those materials together and letting us know where we can target, there's really two factors that go into it. One, our partnerships. We rely on community-based organizations to let us know where the need for various multilingual services are. We also use data, census data, some demographic data, voter data, to combine to also help us target. And we combine those two pieces to really develop our resources and target different communities throughout LA County. We also provide a significant of accessibility support. Some of those services include enhanced vote-by-mail, vote-by-mail ballot, interactive sample ballot, Monica discussed that, the ISB for short, Remote Accessible Vote-by-Mail, or sometimes called RAVBM, and the ballot marking device, which you see here today. Just to talk a little bit more, because the most significant change that we had on those services is our vote-by-mail ballot. And if you're a vote-by-mail voter, you would have noticed these changes already. But just to go over them, it's a larger ballot. It's a full-face ballot. You can read everything that's printed on your ballot right on the ballot card, so you don't need the sample ballot anymore. It's easier to read, a lot more intuitive, easier to fill out, easier to understand, improved multilingual options. We really worked on the multilingual translations on the vote-by-mail ballots to help voters. Also, although this is not related to necessarily accessibility, it's something we can all benefit from. No more postage required. It's all postage-paid when you return your vote-by-mail ballot. And then we will have a network of vote-by-mail drop boxes around LA County, 150 total. So you'll have three options to return a vote-by-mail ballot. You can walk it into a vote center. You can return it by U.S. Postal Service, or you can utilize one of our vote-by-mail drop boxes around LA County. So that covers our community engagement, our multilingual support, and our accessibility support. And I'm going to turn it over to Julian to talk about how we selected our vote centers.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight. We know it's difficult to be here on weeknights sometimes. So Placeworks was hired by the county to locate and place the actual vote centers that you've been hearing about, replacing the traditional polling place. We started this by conducting a series of focus groups, eight focus groups throughout the county, covering a wide variety of demographics, as well as conducting over 2,500 statistically valid phone surveys, reaching out to over 2,500 people and asking questions about where people would like a vote center to be located, what features they would like in a vote center, things like that. The results were basically that people would like, prefer to vote close to home, what they're used to, and second, closer to work. We then performed, we had a database of over 10,000 potential facilities that we were working with, and we performed what we called a desktop review using basically a Google Earth-type system program to look at the sites, ensure that they had some of the features we were looking for, make our initial contact with the site, and see if they'd be interested in participating. We also coordinated with several public agencies, LA County Parks and Rec, LA County Libraries, as well as like City of Los Angeles Parks Department, and all of the city clerks throughout the county of LA, asking for, asking for input on where they felt the best vote centers would be, or also asking, in some cases, the clerks or the Parks Department if a recommended vote center would be a good selection or not. We created an online portal that we, was open and on the Register's website. On there, you could suggest locations for a vote center. You could also provide comments on potential vote centers that were already identified. As soon as we identified a vote center as a potential, we would put it available on the portal for comment. We, as part, you know, part and parcel with the county, we engaged the community. We went out on over 67 community engagement meetings, working with several community-based organizations. We did several meetings before the selection started, and then after the selection. Before the selection, we were again soliciting feedback on where vote centers should be within those communities, what people were looking for out of a vote center. And then afterwards, we were presenting the selections of, we selected 2,000. We were presenting them and again soliciting feedback from the community. At the meetings, we received over 903 different comments and recommendations. The heart of our process was our field review and the creation of our site suitability tool. In the next few slides, we'll go into that into more detail. So after our meetings, after our statistically valid surveys and our polling, we went out and had team members visiting over 2,300 different facilities, covering 20,000 miles throughout the county. They checked for accessibility. They were measuring doorways, checking the slope of ramps, making sure that all the ADA accessibility features that are required were available or could be mitigated. We were also checking for the size of the rooms that were available and what rooms were available if it was a facility like this that had several rooms, and making, again, contact with the facility staff. Accepted facilities, we then put them into another new database and moved them over to the vote center's site suitability tool. That tool was GIS-based, and what it did is it took our 2,000 top sites, and it based off of the criteria in the Voters' Choice Act, so being close to population centers, making sure that no communities were excluded. We worked with the county staff and their technical and community advisory committees to provide a ranking for all of those criteria, and then with the, with the, with the computer program kind of selected the top 1,000 of the 2,000 that we had identified. So this here is a map of the 2,000 vote centers, and you can see that they are, again, heavily located in populated areas, but also we did not exclude any of the lower-populated areas, such as northern LA County and, you know, over in the Malibu, Malibu Hill, west LA County areas as well. So the county, we basically provided the county with two, a list of 2,000 vote centers, with the top 1,000 being selected by the site suitability tool, and the additional 1,000 being available as backup or future use. The next steps is the county is going through the process of recruiting the vote centers, bringing them on board, doing further inspections and investigations. And we're also working with the county to make sure that this site suitability tool can be updated and upkeep, so it's a living, breathing document. And comments on the vote center will continue to be accepted throughout this process. And now I'll turn it over to Laura.
Thank you, Julian. So I'm just going to go over and talk about vote center locations and also the locations of the vote-by-mail drop-off boxes. And so as you heard from our partners at Placeworks about the Vote Center Placement Project being a multifaceted project, where we took GIS data, significant data points, but most importantly, feedback from the community to find out where we should put vote centers, really putting voting where people feel comfortable voting, where people, where it's convenient, and where it's most accessible. And so part of that is really being able to get the 1,000 recommended locations from Placeworks, and then the 1,000 backup locations from Placeworks as well, as a way to ensure that we're putting vote centers where they should be. So part of the, one of the core elements of the election administration plan is the list of the potential vote center locations that we all welcome you to look at, give us feedback about those vote center locations. If there's a particular location that you didn't see or that you would like to suggest, we're still definitely open to hearing suggestions about that. But we're currently engaging in conducting multi-assessments, both accessibility assessments, to ensure that all vote centers are ADA accessible and accessible to all members of the public, but also making sure that we have assessments for power and networking. As you can see, the ballot marking device requires power, so we need to ensure that all vote centers will be able to handle all of that, the power load. But also, we need to ensure that the e-poll books are connected to a secure network. So we need to do some network assessments as well on all of these different sites. We're also currently establishing facility use agreements at all of these sites to ensure that we confirm the reservations, confirm the dates that we will need to be able to set up and break down, and also function all of the vote center locations too. And our goal is to essentially have 250 vote centers on E-minus 10. So 10 days prior to Election Day, have 250 vote center locations open, and then ramp up, as prescribed by the California Voters' Choice Act, to having approximately 1,000 vote center locations that are open starting E-minus 4, which is the Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday that election day that are open for in-person voting. A part of what we're also able to do is have the ability for a mobile voting program. So this is really great because when you think about LA County, a lot of people think about the dense populations. You know, we have 5.4 million registered voters, 10 million residents in LA County, but there are areas of the county that are geographically isolated. So there could make sense that we can actually put a mobile voting unit or a pop-up location in these areas if it makes sense to make voting as convenient and as accessible as possible. Part of what we can do too is to bring voting to some populations that it may be difficult to access in-person voting, like senior homes or independent living centers, homeless shelters, where it may not make sense to have a full 10-day or a four-day vote center, but to have a program where we can bring voting to, in-person voting to these populations on a schedule that makes it easy and accessible to do so as well. What we also are thinking about, based off of the work that we did with Placeworks and the Vote Center Placement Project, was the vote-by-mail drop-off sites. And so essentially, that's in addition to having people be able to drop off their vote-by-mail ballot at vote centers, have 250 additional drop box locations that are conveniently located throughout the county as well. So our goal is to have 250 drop box locations, and we'll be able to refer to all of these different sites in the EAP. In our final EAP, we'll have our vote center locations, our vote-by-mail drop-off locations, and as well additional information about our mobile voting, voting program as well. And also to go into, more into the vote center layout. So as you can see here, we have a sample configuration of a large vote center. And so we actually have a model where we have small, medium, and large vote centers. And see, you'll see here is a large vote center that has about 50 ballot marking devices. And so when you think about it, you see the additional, the staff that will be available at the different, at the different vote centers. But really think about each, the layout of each of these different vote centers. So we received a lot of feedback from our mock election to make sure that we ensure privacy for each of the voters, but also they have to be accessible. So we have to balance those two different priorities in each of the vote centers, depending on the layout of the room. If you think about it, that's 1,000 different locations, 1,000 different unique layouts that we need to create based off of the requirements of the California Voters' Choice Act, but also our own operational requirements. So we also, when we're discussing staffing, you know, we get a lot of questions and concerns about, will there be staff available at these vote centers? And the answer is absolutely yes. And so we really want to make sure that, depending on the size of the vote centers, that we provide enough assistance for voters to be able to securely and smoothly cast their ballot. So depending on the size of the vote center, to have five to 27 different staff members. So we'll have a lead, that's like a supervisor role, that a person will be able to supervise the election workers, as also check-in clerks. So those will be the individuals who'll be checking people in at the electronic poll books. Also, line monitors. So those people will definitely be in the front, the forefront of vote centers. Really, especially in the beginning of this process, people will have concerns and questions, and that person will be able to alleviate any concerns or anxieties or different types of questions that people will have even before going into and checking into a vote center, which would be really great for all sorts of different voters in the ramp-up of the new voting system. Also, we'll have vote, voting area monitors. So those are the folks that are within the BMDs to really help people go through the ballot marking device process. If people had any questions while they were voting and going through the voting process, they can ask any one of those individuals. We also want to balance that too. These folks will not be hovering over voters. They want to ensure the privacy of each of the voters as they cast their ballot. But if people had questions, they could definitely turn to them to be able to answer them. And also have an additional, additional role for provisional or vote-by-mail clerks. So people will still be able to turn in their vote-by-mail ballot at a vote center. So if they were in line, we can actually get them out of that line, direct them to that vote-by-mail clerk. And although we will significantly and drastically cut down the number of provisional ballots, people will still be able to have some instances of submitting a provisional ballot. So we want to ensure that people, someone will be there to be able to guide people through that process as well. And of course, that person will also be handing out the "I voted" sticker, which of course is everyone's favorite part of that voting experience. And so in terms of staffing and how we're recruiting staffing, we get questions about we get questions about that a lot. And so the Board of Supervisors of the county actually passed a motion to recruit county employees to be vote center workers. So definitely using our own departmental staff members to be vote center workers and vote center leads. Also county employees and utilizing temporary county employees, but certainly still utilizing and recruiting our community volunteers. You know, we have poll workers who have been with us for decades that have provided an amazing service to our department on Election Day. So we still want to definitely tap into the talents and the experience of those individuals and bring them in as election workers. Also, definitely still recruiting high school students to be able to become election workers as well, really ensuring that we are using that program as well. So when it comes down to training, so the training will look a lot different from how we conduct training now, where it's gonna be a more extensive training process. There's gonna be a lot more technology and a lot more different facets to this voting experience. So we want to make sure that we boost up that training so that people are able to answer questions during the election period, help people navigate that election process, and then really handle the new technology of the new voting experience. So now I will introduce Erin Navarres, who's going to discuss security of the new voting experience, which is definitely another one of our cornerstones of this project.
Thank you, Laura. And this will be the last slide before we open up the public comment. So again, thank you for being here tonight. What I think we want to inform the public about and ensure that they're aware of is, while the Voting Solutions for All People has really focused a lot on accessibility and convenience for our voters and modernizing the experience, what we want the public also to know is that security has been at the forefront of everything we've done through the Voting Solutions for All People. From its inception, the Voting Solutions for All People had a technical advisory committee that was founded to ensure that elements like security and verification and usability of the system were top concerns. And so in conjunction with that body, we've done a lot of elements to ensure that the security, again, was at the forefront of this project. The one thing we want to focus on is that ballot marking device that you see over there still produces a human readable paper ballot. At the end of the day, that is one of the most secure elements of this new system, is ensuring that voters have a ballot that they can verify with their own eyes, that has their selections printed on the ballot that is inserted back into the ballot marking device. Secondly, it's important to note that these devices are standalone units. They are not connected to any internet at the vote centers. And we are ensuring that, you know, throughout the entire process, there are, you know, elements of security protocols that are at the highest standards, standards that are established by the National Institute of Standards and Technology at the federal level to ensure that all of our processes and procedures are following those standards, again, to ensure that the system is as secure as possible. Finally, at the vote centers, we also mentioned electronic poll books. Those are pieces of technology that are connected to the internet, but again, are connected through secure networks. This isn't the public Wi-Fi that someone can access through their phone. It's secure networks that only our staff and our routers that are connected to our e-poll books can manage. And at the same time, we have things like a security operation center and a network operation center that are monitoring all of these processes, monitoring these networks to let us know if there's any intrusion, any sort of penetration that goes on, that we can immediately shut down those e-poll books, find the, you know, instances of that happening, and find out what's going on in those instances. Throughout the process, we've also undergone immense third-party security testing, where we've hired third-party firms to come in and test all of our processes, all of our procedures, to ensure that we're sticking to the highest standards to identify any potential vulnerabilities. And again, that was part of this process as well. It's also important to note that these devices, along with the entire solution, is going through state certification testing. That is happening as we speak. That covers things like functional testing and volume testing, where we put hundreds of thousands of ballots through the system, penetration testing, accessibility testing, hardware testing, again, to ensure that every element of this new solution that we're rolling out to the public has gone through robust and extensive security training. And then we also have partnerships from the federal level all the way down to the local level. At the federal level, working with groups like the Department of Homeland Security and the Federal Bureau of Investigation to ensure that we have relationships and collaboration with, you know, agencies at the highest level, down at the state level, working closely with our Secretary of State's office to, again, ensure that from the state and federal level and all the way down to the local level through our, again, through our Internal Services Department and through our Chief Information Office in collaboration with our own internal security team to make sure that this system is as secure as possible. So again, this information is available in the Election Administration Plan, as is all the information that you heard tonight. So again, we really appreciate you being here. There's a lot of information in NEAP. Our staff will remain available after. But at this time, I will turn it back over to our director, our registrar, Dean Logan, to open the public comment period, if any of you have public comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That was a lot of information to go over. I know there's a great deal of information that was shared, and these are significant changes that are taking place in 2020 for the voting experience in Los Angeles County. I just want to reiterate that this process has been very methodical and intentional. We have developed these systems in conjunction and engagement with Los Angeles County voters, and it is our intention to continue to engage with the public to ensure that we're offering a voting environment and a voting experience that lives up to the significance of our citizens casting their votes in our elections. So that the key takeaways here for the new voting experience are that it's now an 11-day voting period, where any voter in the county can vote at any location. So that enables you to vote close to work, close to home, close to where your children go to school, or where you're out in the community doing other things that you normally do, whether that be attending a medical appointment, doing shopping, or going to a local gym, whatever it is that you're doing during that 11-day period. Our goal is to be visible in the community so that when you're ready to cast your vote, that you can do that at a place that you feel confident in participating. So with that, I would like to open up the public comment period. We are gonna ask, I know it's a small environment tonight, but we are gonna ask if you wouldn't mind going to the microphone and introducing yourselves. That just helps us keep a public record of who's here and what the questions are. I did have one speaker card. Yes, we can get you a card, sir. So I'm gonna start with, I did, I received a card from Serena Cannon, and I want to invite you up. I have your questions, I can address those, or if you'd like to ask them at the mic, however you'd like to proceed. Okay, great. So, thank you, Ms. Cannon. You posed a number of questions. I think some of these were covered in the latter part of the presentation, but let me go through them relatively quickly, and then we'd be happy to talk with you more later as well. First question is, how can you control someone voting more than one time? Obviously, an important security element of the process, the ability for people to go and vote at any location. We obviously have to have a mechanism to make sure that they can't go and vote repeatedly. So that is a function of the e-poll book. So when you go in and you sign in that e-poll book, that will update our system on a real-time basis. So if you voted in downtown LA and then you attempted the next day to go to a location somewhere else in the county, it would show that you had already cast your ballot. Similarly, if you submitted a vote-by-mail ballot, the system is gonna show that we've received a vote-by-mail ballot from you as well. So there is a mechanism to make sure that everyone can only vote one time. Second question, how do you protect systems from viruses and hacking of the voting system? I think Erin Navarres covered that in the security slide, but there are a number of elements of system security that are built into this. Most importantly is, again, to recognize that this device is a standalone device. It's not networked. It is there to assist you in marking your ballot, but the ballot itself is a paper, human-readable ballot that comes back to our offices and is counted on an independent tally system. So this device does not count your votes. It does not retain a record of your votes. That's all on the paper ballot that comes back to our office, and then that is retained for recounts and post-election auditing. As Erin mentioned, we've conducted a number of third-party testing. California has some of the strictest security standards for voting systems in the country, and our system has to pass those tests in order to be certified, and there are records of that as well. Third question, how do you keep those who are not eligible to vote from voting? So let me cover, I'm gonna list all of your questions and try to cover them. So how do you keep those who are not eligible to vote from voting? Will the homeless be able to vote? Will you be checking IDs when someone comes to a vote center? And will this presentation be online for review? Voter registration in California and really throughout the country is based on the attestation of the voter at the time that they registered to vote, saying that they meet the qualifications to be registered to vote. So that includes being a resident of the state of California, at the age of or over 18 years old, a United States citizen, and not denied the right to be registered to vote through the courts. So that is really a self-declaration that voters indicate at the time of voter registration. California does not require voter identification at the time of voting, except in very limited experiences, and that is if you're registered to vote for the first time by mail, and we were not able to validate your identity through a cross-check of your California driver's license number or California ID number, then the first time that you vote in person, you would be asked for identification. But that is the only time in California that voter identification is required. Otherwise, the voter at the time of voting is signing a legal oath under penalty of perjury that they are who they say they are and that they haven't cast a ballot elsewhere in the election. We are, we do have provisions to ensure that homeless, people experiencing homelessness have the opportunity to vote. They are certainly eligible to register to vote. We will be doing outreach to the homeless community through shelters and in conjunction with the county's homelessness program. The mobile voting units that Laura talked about will be used to go into those areas where there may not be physical vote centers available, and we'll use that as an opportunity to do outreach there as well. And yes, this presentation will be available online for review. The video will be posted. The PowerPoint that you saw up here and all of the associated information is already available for you on the website. Right. Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to go, and then we'll go with you next. Yes, if you don't mind going up there, please, and introducing yourself.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Davis Silverstreet. Actually, I'm a resident here in West Adams and also the Vice President of the West Adams Neighborhood Council. So I have a couple of questions. In terms of the centers, have voting centers been determined already within our council districts? And if so, what is that process, or are you still deciding?
So there have been target locations identified through the process that Julian spoke about, where we had community meetings and we got input from the public on recommended locations. Now we're in the process of doing assessments of those locations for accessibility, parking, electrical assessments to make sure they're suitable locations for vote centers. If they meet those requirements, then we enter into a use agreement with whoever operates that property. So we're in the midst of doing that right now, so they aren't completely secured. There is still opportunity for input in that process, although we're well into the assessment phase right now. Some of the things, just to add to that, some of the things that we heard during those public engagement activities are, many of the vote centers will be located in common public facilities like city parks facilities, city libraries, city halls. A lot of people gave us feedback that those are places that they would associate with a public process like voting. At the same time, we heard from other voters at those same meetings that they would prefer for it not to be a public, a traditional public facility. People who told us that oftentimes there's a police station attached to a city hall, and they might perceive that to be a form of intimidation. They would rather vote at a community center or in a retail environment or something of that nature. What's great about this model is it allows us to offer both of those types of locations, so the voter can choose the type of environment that they want to be in. So, but in answer to your question, those sites aren't finalized yet. We can, we can work with you to provide a breakdown of which locations are being looked at in your council district, and we'd love to have your input in that process.
Okay, great. And then my second question had to do with the seniors. And how are you working to support the seniors in each of our, you know, council districts and the mobility hubs? Or if you come to the seniors, Laura had mentioned the senior centers. So how does that work? How do you select it? And is that a one-time type of event? Or is that something where you would actually, I don't know. You tell me.
Yeah. No, thank you for the question. So we're very sensitive to that issue. We know that this is a significant change and that in particularly seniors in our communities who are longtime voters, some of them have voted their entire life, always going to the same polling place, and this is a change away from that model. That also means in some cases that some voters may have to travel further to get to the voting location than they have in the past. We are trying to keep it within close proximity, so it's within community, so people don't have to travel outside of their community if they don't want to. But we're sensitive to that, and we're working through, we've identified all of the assisted living facilities, nursing facilities, and independent living facilities in the county. We're reaching out to their program staff to see, can we have a partnership where perhaps they can schedule time to bring people from the facilities to vote centers, if that's a possibility? If it's not, we can schedule the mobile units or the pop-up locations where we can take those to the centers. I wouldn't say it would be a one-time thing, but it would be a scheduled activity. So we obviously wouldn't be there for the full 11 days or four days, but we would schedule to be there. But we also, part of the design of this is that while you might have to travel a little further to go to a voting location, the idea is that we will have voting locations, vote centers, in places close to where people are doing their regular activities. So again, if you're out doing your shopping on the weekend, if you're going to a doctor's appointment on the Wednesday before the election, the idea is that there would, somewhere in the proximity of those locations where you're doing your day-to-day functions, that there would be a vote center available that could serve you. So it's a sort of a holistic approach. We know that there's not a one-size-fits-all for everybody, and we're trying to make sure that we accommodate all.
Yeah, I would just, I guess my final note is that, as you said, a lot of seniors, and especially in our communities of color, that are used to going to a location that is near them to not create a barrier, that they are not able to go to a center that might, can accommodate a lot of people, but still the seniors end up missing out.
Obviously, don't want that to happen. And we're also working in partnership with the faith-based community in that regard to get feedback again on where are the places that would best serve people in the community. Thank you. Sir, please.
My name is Clint Simmons, and I live in the West Adams area. I've noticed that you only have five areas that we were able to come to an event like this. Is there any reason why there wasn't any more than just the five that was chosen?
Yeah, so the public hearings on the, specific to the Election Administration Plan, because of the timeframe associated with when we have to present this to the Secretary of State, we scheduled one in each of the five supervisory districts in the county. Legally, we're only required to have one public hearing, but because LA County is so large, we thought it was important to have more than one. But I want to emphasize that this is just one piece of the engagement that we've done. So for the Vote Center Placement Project that Julian talked about, we held over 60 public meetings in communities throughout LA County, giving similar presentations, actually more extensive presentations than what was presented tonight, to get feedback about the types of locations. So that work, that level of engagement has already been done. This is more of the formal public hearing specifically on the Election Administration Plan. And again, beyond the public hearings, we're taking public comment online, over the phone, and by email.
In other words, will there be training for people at these centers before they vote?
Absolutely, yes. So this, and that's an important point. This hearing tonight is about the plan for how we do the outreach. The outreach itself has to be much more broadly distributed throughout the community. We have 10 locations every week where we're doing demonstrations. We'll be doing town halls. We'll be doing the mass media campaign that you heard about. And then we will have staff on-site during that voting period to instruct voters, help them feel comfortable with the process as well.
What is the last day? I have never had a mail-in ballot. I've never done it in my life. But what if a person want to mail in his ballot? What is the last day that it could be counted?
So vote-by-mail ballots can be submitted up until Election Day as long as it is postmarked or dropped off in a ballot box by Election Day. And if it's, if it's post- And, and if it's, if it's postmarked, it has to be received within three days of the Election Day. But, so, so we, we receive vote-by-mail ballots up to and including on Election Day. Some of those even coming the days after the election, as long as they were postmarked by Election Day.
Okay, now going to the security. Do you have a method that you can verify if a person mailed his mailing ballot on the day and then vote the same day in person? What happens on that? In other words, the mailing ballot would be something later, and the person voting would be at that particular?
Right, so we, we do track that. So the, the way that would work is the, the, the first ballot submitted, actually cast and put into a ballot box, would be the ballot that was counted. So if you voted at a vote center and used the device and your ballot went into the ballot box, and then later we received a vote-by-mail ballot from you, then that vote-by-mail ballot would be invalid. We also would track that as, as a potential instance of somebody attempting to vote twice. Now, sometimes that happens by accident. Somebody doesn't remember that they had submitted their vote-by-mail ballot or something like that. So, so we would, we would look into that. But there are safeguards to ensure that only one ballot per voter gets.
Okay, or what if I lived in Orange County? I had a business in Los Angeles County. I'm also registered to vote in Orange County. I come since I have a business in Los Angeles, and my driving license states that I live in Los Angeles. That happens quite frequently. And, and since I could register the same day, that means I could vote at home before I leave Orange County, then vote again in Los Angeles if it's a statewide election.
Yes, so there are a couple of safeguards associated with that. First, first, just to be clear, so everybody knows, your registration is based on your residency, so, so it is true, and you are testing to that when you register to vote. But the circumstance, the scenario that you mentioned, conditional voter registration, which is that ability that Monica talked about, your ability to go in and register on the day of the election, we will let you register to vote. We will issue you a ballot, but that ballot, instead of going into the ballot box, that ballot would go into a conditional voter registration envelope. And then we would wait until we verified your registration through the state database. That's where we would be able to identify, are you already registered to vote somewhere else in California? And if so, did you cast a ballot in that county? So that's a safeguard built into that. We would do all of that verification during the 30-day post-election canvas period, but we would not actually count your ballot until we validated the registration through the state database and confirmed that you had not voted in another county.
Well, that's something new that you have that did not happen previously, because I know of incidents where people live and voted in St. County. So I don't see where this is going to detect that myself.
Appreciate your questions. Yes, ma'am, please.
Hello, Serena Cannon. I have follow-up questions. I know the presenter before she mentioned regarding the voter centers that they're selecting has to have internet service, and you mentioned that it's not necessary, because these are ballots that are just put in, so you don't need that type of assistance?
Yeah, so it's not, it's, just to clarify, sure. It's not internet service per se. It is, we do have to have connection to a secure network, and that is for the e-poll book, which allows us on, for the purposes of the list of voters, to do a real-time update. So again, on the earlier scenario, so we know that you voted in downtown LA, and if you zipped over to Lancaster and tried to vote again, we would have a record of that. That's for the electronic poll book. The voting devices themselves are not connected to that network in any way. These are standalone devices that are not connected.
So the e-poll books will be at each voter's center?
Yes.
Along with these?
Correct.
Okay. So then the other question I have is, as far as the timeframe, you know, we usually have from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM to vote. Is, is the timeframe going to be the same for those 11 days?
Great question. So during, what the law says is that, that during the 10 days prior to the election, we have to have them open for a minimum of eight hours a day. So it's kind of standard business hours. That's the requirement in the law. We have the flexibility. We can open them later if we, if we wish to. On Election Day itself, on Tuesday Election Day, it does follow the traditional polling hours, where they will open at 7:00 AM, and the final voting will end at 8:00 PM on, on Election Night. And that's when the, the, the voting centers will be closed and will begin to tabulate the votes.
And then I know earlier you all mentioned about, that there was a level of engagement presented to the community for input regarding this whole process. I never heard of it. So where did you present the information to have folks to be involved in this, to have a voice in it, even regarding the locations like the lady mentioned earlier? Because I know, I know where I vote at, and I live in a community that is a lot, that we have a lot of seniors, I really, you know, and the park is where we normally vote. And I don't know if that park, per se, has the capability of the internet access for the e-polling or whatever network that may be needed there. So how did all that come about so that we knew? Because I, I don't think anyone in our area knew of this at all, until I saw it on, a blast on Nextdoor. That's how I was able to know this today.
So there were various components. Let me start by saying, first, please, while, while we have you here tonight, please talk with, with Laura, because we can check on that particular location, and we still want that input. There, there have been various components of the, the Voting Solutions for All People Project has, has really been a decade-long project. It started in, in 2009, and it included focus groups, surveys that were conducted by academic organizations. So we, we received a lot of input through that. The Vote Center Placement Project and those 60 community meetings that we talked about, those were advertised similarly through Nextdoor, through social media, through email blasts and robocalls to voters on the voter file, and also partnerships with our stakeholder communities. In fact, those particular meetings followed a model where we, we partnered with community-based organizations who served as the host of those meetings. We came in and did the presentations, but we, so some of those organizations were the League of Women Voters, the Asian Americans Advancing Justice, I'm trying to think a number, there were a number of community-based organizations that, that hosted that. So that's how the outreach for those, those particular meetings were done. Anyone else who wishes to, to make public, offer public comment or ask any questions? Okay, if not, I'm going to bring the formal part of this public hearing to a close. Thank you again for being here. We have a number of people here. We're happy to continue the dialogue with you and get you additional information. Your input is extremely valuable. The questions you ask are very helpful. Yes, sir, you had another question?
One question, I should go. In terms of training, senior citizen, for example, this type of plan here is scary to them in that respect. Will there be special people at a voting place that senior can go into, try to, make it a bit valid? Is that what happening? Or just how are you guys going to do that? Because now, you have a couple of days of voting, and the centers won't be anywhere to choose to put them in that respect. I do think that unless we have some better communication, better outreach to the community, and making citizens aware that this change will not be completely different from what they have in the past, it'd just be a little more training would be required.
Great, no, thank you. And so the question was regarding training, and in particular, how to orient people to the, to the new system, and in particular, seniors. I will tell you that through the, the mock election that we did four weeks ago, and through the community meetings that we've had so far, we have to do much more of that. But the, the, and, and if you haven't had a chance, I hope you'll have it, take an opportunity to, to try it tonight, because the feedback we've received is that while it may look intimidating when you first walk in, because it's different than what we're used to, when people actually begin using it, they find it to be easier or more intuitive than the, than the current Inkavote system, where you have to shove that card down over the pegs and, and punch the hole. So it really has been designed to be usable, and, and we, we took a lot of care, working with our design partners, to, to think about things like people with disabilities, people with language issues, and, and, and our senior population. So that was part of the design. To, to your point, though, none of that matters if we don't do a good job of educating the public about it. They're going to expect what they've seen before, and that's the challenge in a community the size of, of Los Angeles County. So this is the beginning of that process. So the mock election was sort of the kickoff. Again, we have demonstration centers, just like what you were describing, where people can go in and try it, available throughout the community right now, at 10 different locations every week. That'll continue through the end of January. Our media campaign will include video clips showing how the equipment works and, and trying to ensure that people feel comfortable and confident with it. And then at the actual vote centers, we are going to staff at a level where, where those line monitors, the people who first greet you when you come in, can spend some time orienting you to the equipment and the new experience before, as you say, you actually take your ballot in and actually go to, go to mark your ballot.
The reason I raise that, I've had two people tell me already, it's not worth voting anymore. You've got all this nonsense, as they call it. And that's the reason why I'm asking this question, because we have problems now of getting people to vote with the rest of the system. And then we were bringing the electronics, the computer age, and then that makes it much more difficult. We want to prevent it, but I'm too thankful in that respect.
Sure, so, no, that's important feedback for us, and, and we need to, we need to address that. I think part of addressing that is, is informing the community that this wasn't just done on a whim. I mean, the, the current voting system is no longer certified for use in California. I mean, and, and it's, we can't get replacement parts for it anymore. So we've used that system basically since 1968, and we, we're sort of, it has limitations, and we're forced to, to move to a new system. But I'm very sensitive to, to what you said. We don't want to lose voters in this process. It was, it was designed for the voters. It wasn't designed to, and it's not, it's not highly technical. It's, it's actually, but, but there is a perception issue, and I hear what you're saying.
So, very interesting data.
Yeah.
A lot of seniors, these kids with these smart voting programs, and they agree we associate that with the sweet voting.
Yeah. So that's why we have to target our education and outreach to all the demographics in LA County, not, we can't do a generic message. We have to go out and have conversations with folks like you, the people that you're talking about, and try to build that confidence and ensure that, that they, they come out and vote. And so I don't underestimate the, the importance of that or the need for that, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
I have a comment. I want to say, if any of you, because all of the speakers today have brought up, you know, the seniors in this community, if any of you have any suggestions for where we can come and bring the devices and have either a demonstration center or a presentation, we'd be happy to take that information and collaborate with you.
Obviously, neighborhood councils, that would be one area that we can advertise earlier, and you have it at one of our meetings. And then that, that would eliminate the fear of some people.
We would be delighted to do that. So talk with Monica, or Laura, or Jeff afterwards. Jeff, Laura's been to everything. Laura, Laura gets all over the county. I don't know how she does it. But, and Jeff, and Jeff is very familiar with the Neighborhood Council structure, and, and we've partnered with the city. In fact, I was just before the LA City Council yesterday with the LA City Clerk Holly Wolcott and her staff, who are helping us, and they run the, the Neighborhood Council elections. And so we, we definitely can expand on that partnership.
We've been engaging with Don, having, with Department of Neighborhood Empowerment.
Yes.
Discussions, yes. So we're going to do a more strategic approach.
That would be the best way to get in.
Yeah. I had a conversation with Raquel Beltran, who's their new director.
The new director, right.
So we're going to be working with through her.
I could be with Salam, just wanted to add, sorry to speak out.
No problem.
Even with your infomercials, bringing seniors into the mix of it, to let them show them, of them casting a ballot and voting machines, that they can see their image of themselves.
Yeah, so it, that's very important. Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much. All right, with that, I'm going to close this out. Please stick around, have further conversation with us. If you haven't had a chance to use the device, please, please try it out, and, and we'd be happy to continue the conversation.